To assume that's not an attic. But as it progresses, we're going to be looking to transfer that to another entity to take that. Fire Department, we're going to be focused on operations, like I said. And there are going to be a lot of other functions that need to be addressed as well. So think about logistics, coordinating resources, communication, things like that. That need to take place further than just the actual ones happening. And again, that's what EOC, that's going to be one of their functions. So the Fire Department would certainly have a presence in the EOC with that team. That's going to be important for planning, figuring out what resources or anything like that. But again, you can't assume that the Fire Department will be the incident, the incident commander. So the big question that everybody asks is, well, the Fire Department has an EOC, correct? Yes and no. Here at our ability, we have a room that we call the EOC. And I actually don't like that name because it gets confused with the function of what we're talking about. What we have is a room where we can coordinate our efforts here at the fire station. Keeping that in mind, this place is going to be pretty chaotic. We're going to have volunteers and staff in and out. We're going to have resources, fire trucks in and out. But there'll be resources coming in from other agencies, Canada, B, or statewide if that's the case. So as an EOC, it's really not a good location. So we'll talk about some of the reasons why it isn't here. But I do want to reiterate that probably our facility is not a good location for an EOC. So some of the roles, the big roles of an emergency operations center. Information management, resource management, planning, communication. And also some other roles that have maybe been there such as emergency shelters, point distribution, like I was talking about, except donations, coordinating resources, things like that. So information management. We need to obviously, we need to know what's going on. Bigger than just why does this happen on scene? Are we doing damage assessments throughout the neighborhoods? Where is that information going? And it's important we have a central resource where that stuff can be taken care of. Resource management, like I said, we're probably going to be bringing resources from outside locations, not just our fire district. Whether it be Red Trust or other agencies, total accounting, state. We have a sense of managing those resources. In a major event, maybe looking for things like bulldozers to clear streets or teams to run chains, things like that. Again, that's very difficult to coordinate all that as a incident commander, working out the field or the operations. Planning, where are the resources needed, what are the priorities, et cetera. And then of course, communication, communication with responders, communication with volunteers, communication with public victims, all that stuff, all very important. It's also, I think it's worth noting that the Fire Department is going to be focused right here. Those efforts. When we're talking about EOC, I think this is what a lot of people picture. This actually is the, this is Glendale, Arizona. This is their emergency operations center, and this was two weeks before the Super Bowl as they were preparing. Obviously, we need to get this picture out of our heads because this is not what we're looking at. This is a major dedicated facility that has private meeting rooms. It has obviously lots and lots of computers, lots of communication devices. But obviously, think on a much smaller scale. And that brings us really to the next question is what do we need in in any EOC for this area? And really what it comes down to is an EOC is basically just a dedicated workspace. And it can be any pre-designated gathering space. So at its most basic, it's just somewhere where a team, a pre-designated team can work and get together. We know where it is, we know where we're gathering. And this can either be for an emergency or even a pre-event. For example, if we had a major weather front coming in, whether it be snow, an earthquake with a tidal event in Japan that we're expecting in several hours that may or may not hit. You've got to think that it's good to have a place where people can gather to get ready for things. Something to remember, an EOC can basically be, it can be used for virtually any other function. It can be a training room, it can be a meeting room, anything like that. Just when it's activated, it has to be dedicated to that emergency response. I keep missing my buttons here. There we go. So really, what needs to be included in an EOC? First one I have up there is security. That's another example of why I feel that the fire station is not great as a EOC location. And let me clarify, when I say security, it's more about limiting access. Our EOC is wide open to any of the volunteers, any of the responders. And what you really need is a place where you can limit access to predetermined people. Because basically, when something happens, everybody wants to have a reason to be at the center of the action, right? So everybody wants to come in and see what's going on and add their piece and add their two cents, their advice. So when I'm talking security, it's really about giving yourself some place to work that's quiet and free from distraction and outside influence. Backup power is a big one. Obviously, if we don't have power, we can't do our jobs in a lot of cases. Communication capabilities, landline phones, cell phones, satellite phones, if they're available. Computer workstations with network capabilities, computer printers. All these are all things that should be included. Emergency documents, this is a big one. Do you have a copy of the emergency plan for Manzanita, for the region? Do you have maps available? Inter-agency agreements are important. Resource lists, knowing how to contact those resources. Basically, all those documents need to be readily accessible in an emergency. Supplies such as the little things, pens and pencils, erasers, calculators, easel pads. All that stuff needs to be, again, ready to go. And generally, they say as a rule that you should have food, water, and sanitation supplies specifically for those people manning the EOC. You don't need more than that, but for 72 hours, the people in that EOC should be self-sufficient. So that is the quick and dirty rundown. Basically, what it breaks down to is the EOC can be a very valuable tool, either for emergency response or getting ready for major events. An EOC does not have to be complex. It can be a multi-purpose space. Like I said, it could be used for a training room or a meeting room, anything like that. Again, as long as it can be solely dedicated when needed. And remember that the EOC's purpose is not just for directing the emergency response. Like I said, in fact, actual operations usually are not going to be in the EOC. But think about the communications, the planning, the logistics, the resources, things like that. And that is really the quick and dirty rundown, so I'm happy to answer any questions.
So Chris, I'll ask you a question. So talk to us a little bit about, you talked about the fact that you didn't believe that you would be the incident commander. Talk a little bit to the community about what an incident, what the role of an incident commander is. And if you are not the incident commander and it is a Manzanita event, who becomes the incident commander?
Okay, so first of all, why I don't think that I would be the incident commander. Like I said, I, and when I say I, I mean the Fire District, not necessarily me personally. But we, the Fire District would be the incident commander initially. But as the incident grows and gets more complex, the Fire Department is going to be tied into operations. Boots on the ground, so to speak, actually putting the fires out or treating the casualties or searching the buildings. But like I said, there are a whole lot of other things that need to be taken care of. Are the police involved? Are there security concerns? Are there volunteers that need to be coordinated? What about the roads? What about sewage power? Who's footing the bills? Where are the resources coming from, things like that? Those are all the job of the incident commander. And that's why I say that in a major event, that we can't rely on the Fire Department to be that incident commander. And essentially, whoever is incident command has to be somebody that has the power to make those decisions. Like they say, where does the buck stop? The buck stops here. It's that one person that has the ultimate authority to say yes or no to everything. In a Manzanita event, most likely, that would probably be Mayor Scott. But it could be anybody who he designates or who the board designates that has that decision-making capability.
Thank you.
Chief, I have a question. I think most people are thinking about an event that would be beyond just a Manzanita event. I mean, obviously, there could be a Manzanita-only event, but I suspect that we're most mindful of a more regional event. So in that event, two questions. One, how would incident command work where you're talking about multiple jurisdictions? And two, for a region like ours, the three villages and the other unincorporated areas around, would you be recommending multiple EOCs or a single site?
Last question first, definitely a single site is best. Again, you don't want those duplication of efforts. We're looking at very limited resources. So we are going to have to prioritize regionally what gets taken care of first and where those resources go. As far as who's in charge and how that works, that comes down to agreements that need to be in place before an event between all of these.
And isn't it likely that in a significant earthquake event, incident command would fall to state or federal authorities? They may be here on, hopefully, they'd be here. But I'm just assuming that there would be jurisdictions larger than any of our small communities that would assert themselves.
Yes and no. Hopefully, they would be there to help. There's a saying that all disasters start and end locally. So the ultimate authority always stays with the local jurisdiction. Those county and state and federal resources hopefully are there to step in and augment and help. But again, the ultimate authority always stays with the locals.
Thanks.
Hi, Chief, I have a couple of quick questions, I guess, or comments. One, I'm wondering, first of all, thank you for a great presentation, appreciate that. But I was curious about your take on a joint command. And I'm more focused right now on thinking about who in fact would be in command of a Manzanita event or even a local, regional event. Are you thinking more in terms of the operational aspects of the Fire District combined with some kind of a joint command where a Fire District representative is at the EOC along with utility department and power electric school, I mean, everybody basically. And we actually in our, and I think Linda would be able to talk to this. I know in our emergency operations plan, we have developed a process, if you will, of an executive team to kind of lead that effort. And I wanted just to make sure that we're on the same page relative to, it wouldn't be up to necessarily elected officials or city council people, but it would have to operate jointly because what the Fire District needs in terms of an operational aspect to the incident would have to be answered as well as the utility department, the police department. All these different folks are going to have to come together and make decisions based on priorities, if I make any sense at all.
Yeah, and I agree 100% that those decisions are going to have to be made together. Especially since we do have the separate villages and, like you said, all the different entities. If I were the incident commander, I'm going to have a very hard time telling Manzanita that we're taking their resources and dedicating them to the hail them when there are needs in Manzanita. So yes, it's going to have to be, I think, a joint command with a lot of decision-makers at the table.
Would you think that the Fire District could provide a senior level officer to the EOC? Is that what you're thinking strategy-wise, that it wouldn't necessarily be you, but it might be one of your assistants?
That would be my thought, yes.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions from council?
Yeah, I've got a question. I'm trying to figure out how to frame it because it's kind of a rambling question. But the reality of, and I know I'm talking to citizens around town and stuff, is trying to understand. When we built the fire station 10 years or so, even longer now, I think some of us thought, well, that that's where the action's going to be, that's the EOC, that's where all the firemen are going to be, that's where we're going to get our answers, that's why we pay in our taxes, that's why we build it. Now, the reality is being involved over the years in smaller events, real small events even. People tend to, they call or they come to City Hall for answers about some of the simplest things possible. I don't think they're going to go down to the fire station. They're going to want our, when the power's coming back on, you know, that kind of stuff. I think what we're trying to organize, this is a rambling, I don't even know if it's a question, it's a statement. But what we're trying to get in our heads here is we go forward building a new City Hall facility. How do we fit into this thing and what do we got to prepare for? Because we know people will arrive at our doorsteps expecting us to do certain functions. Whether you call it an EOC or the command post or just call it City Hall, I'm going to have to be there with Leila and the rest of the consorts. We're going to have to help out and have some answers. So I don't know how you quantify all that.
Right. And I think that's actually one of the very important things for an EOC is being able to sequester yourselves away from all those distractions. Because somebody is going to be overwhelmed with trying to answer those questions and provide those answers and provide those small little services. So although I think you need somebody in that position to be somewhere to answer those, the actual emergency operations center should be sequestered from those. I hate to call our public distractions, but that's what they are, that you need to be sequestered from those distractions.
Can I add, Linda, maybe you're, I don't want to take away your thunder if you were going this direction. But based upon Chief Beswick's comments, I can only urge that practice, practice, practice. The only way that we're going to understand it and the way that it will work is if we spend the time to practice. And my experience, and I'm sure Chris's experience as well, is that over time, a lot of these issues would just kind of naturally fall out. And people would begin to understand how the concept of ICS and how the concept of EOC and how the concept of delivery of emergency services all kind of works. And people become accustomed to the process. So I just, and Linda is tired to hear me say this, but practice, 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 it really has to happen.
I got another question, and we got to have some redundancy somehow, and I don't know where that comes from. I mean, I can hang in there for a few hours, but I'm not going to be able to hang in there for a few days.
Exactly, exactly.
And when I got to take a break, who takes over behind me? And further.
That's part of what drills help you practice, you have shifts. And you plan ahead, and that's a major role that Chris has pointed out in terms of planning. Planning is always working on the next time. I mean, essentially, they're getting ready for what that next shift will look like and making sure that the personnel is ready and that people are contacted and understand what that next role is. So that's a really important function of the EOC and the planning function. We do, I, this is probably a really good time to ask this, I was going to open it up to the public. But Bill Kirby has asked in the chat, does this mean each village, city, town needs their own EOC? If not, does Manzanita become the hub by default for the larger area? Chris, can you respond to that? Maybe, maybe I'll respond to that as well.
I can, in fact, I was just typing and then I realized that it probably made more sense for everybody to hear that. Bill, in my opinion, every city should have a designated EOC, even if that is as simple as a coffee table where city leadership can meet in the event of an event. So yeah, and then there should be some central gathering point for at least a liaison from each city, from each, also PUD, roads, things like that. So again, that should be an agreement between all the cities of where that central meeting hub is. If communications are still up and there's still internet, then that can even be done remotely or by phone. But to answer your question directly, yes, in my opinion, every city should have.
And I, and I think by default, the city of Manzanita, since we're the larger of the three, we're talking region, may become default the regional EOC. And again, it just depends on circumstances and what happens. I want to address the question that Jerry brought up because I think that's, I think that's a really good question. And I'm going to go back to our experience in 2007. In 2007, for the first time since I'd been here, we were truly isolated. Nobody could get in, we didn't have electricity, we had to depend on ourselves. And it was a week before we actually had access to the outside world. And what we learned in that and the basis of almost all of our planning right now is that we have to take care of ourselves. We need, we need to understand that we're a small rural community and we're going to be competing for resources from places like the I-5 corridor and Portland and Salem and even Tillamook. So to expect external resources, they will be here. But there's going to be a period of time where we have to be able to kind of manage our own resources. And so that's, that's part of the driving force for this, that we are going to be dependent on local resources, at least initially, until somebody can get here, if that makes sense. Any other questions from council, and then maybe we could open it up to, to the community? Okay.
I don't see any hands raised, Linda.
Okay. All right, well, if you do have additional questions, we'll have time at the end of Lee's presentation to respond to Lee and to Chris, if you have those questions. So I'm going to pass the baton now to Lee, who's going to be talking to us about what mask care is all about.
Thank you, Linda. Hi, everyone, and thanks for the opportunity to share some information today. There's three things that I hope that the council takes away from my share today, and that is that you're better informed, that you're able to continue to provide energy toward emergency preparedness. And last, that the share generates some questions and discussion. I really liked what Mayor said at the beginning of this, that this was going to be a discussion, and I hope it is. And if not today, that the council can take time and devote some energy to continuing these discussions. And on that note, I also like very much what Commissioner Nudel said, Councilor Nudel said about the need to practice, 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 practice. His fire department wasn't successful because people read about it and believed they knew what was going on. It was successful because they drilled regularly. And I'm sure that Chief Beswick's folks do that as well. So that's the key. I want to make clear that I'm not an expert on mask care. I like to think of myself as a student of mask care and preparedness. And I hope that somehow or another that we can all think about being a student of mask care and preparedness and continue to learn and be more resilient individually and as a community. So with that, I'm going to share my screen. Everybody see that?
Yep.
Okay. So that's what we're going to be doing today, a little bit about general information sharing and some concepts and hopefully an opportunity for some specific questions. So this is something that does a lot here in Manzanita in a normal year. Obviously, that's not happening right now, but we can hope to reduce the fire season events and likelihood that we'll be getting some of this moisture. And I'm going to kind of focus today on Cascadia. That's the name that seismologists have for this fault off our coast. And the reason being that if we can prepare emotionally and physically for Cascadia, we can be prepared for anything. So while this kind of focuses on the big event, we could be dealing with fires or maybe a more local event such as the tornado that occurred a few years ago. So here's the setup, folks. Two years from this coming October, at 1:30 in the morning. And of course, it's going to be windy and rainy. And the reason being, and I just want you to listen for a little bit, here's a little audio for you to kind of, kind of set the tone. So bear with me. So if you're not squirming just a little bit, you're not human. What are you doing?
You know.
Yes, Linda?
I'm not sure, I didn't hear that.
Oh, no.
Yeah, I'm not sure if anybody else did.
Did anybody hear?
No, I'm not hearing anything.
Oh, I'm terribly sorry. Well.
There's some wind, some wind in the beginning.
Yeah, it kind of disappeared.
Well, now I lost the screen share too. I'm going to go out of screen sharing and come back in.
Okay.
My apologies. That was actually an audio of an earthquake. And it was, on my, on my sound, it was pretty, pretty intense and quite moving, to say the least. All right, now I've lost my opportunity to, here we go, let's see if I can get this back. All right, now I've lost my opportunity to, here we go. Let's see if I can get this back. Well, try this again. Modern technology.
It always happens.
Linda said, are you sure you don't want to do a dry run on this? Make sure the sound comes through. Said, no, I've done that three or four times.
This practice, practice.
Yeah, right, right. Let's try this.
Lee, you might try clicking on one of those arrows to see if you can move that slide forward.
I have been, that's what I've been doing, and it didn't work. Wow, what a bummer.
So down below, if you put the cursor down below on the arrow.
There you go. Perfect. Thank you, Steve.
Thanks, Steve. You're now hired as a technology professional. So I really, really wish you could have heard the audio because it is, it is pretty moving. Windows breaking and waves crashing on the beach and buildings coming down and people screaming. So with that said, here's what happened. We've got a massive eight point six Cascadia earthquake two miles west of Tillamook, and the quake's only a half a mile deep. If any of you don't know what that means, it means that the intensity is likely to be very large and a significant amount of damage resulting in a significant tsunami. And the shaking continues for over six minutes. Seismologists tell us that a major Cascadia event would likely got a massive eight point six have shaking in excess of six minutes. That's what happened in in Japan in two thousand and eleven. That was a six minute event. People would have less than ten minutes to seek high ground. And the resulting tsunami takes out one hundred and fifty homes in Manzanita. All power is disrupted and aftershocks continue through the night. You know that Christchurch earthquake in New Zealand in also in two thousand and eleven, curiously enough, that they had aftershocks for six to eight years afterwards that were re-related to that particular event. So something to be mindful of, at least initially, that if everything looks safe because it wasn't a major event, that it's likely to continue for some time afterwards. So daylight reveals that Highway one oh one is not passable in any direction, water and sewer inoperable. By the way, about the Highway one oh one, the ODOT tells us that after a major seismic event, that it's almost certain that there will only be one route in our area going east, west, and that's Highway eighteen down out of Lincoln City. So six is gone, twenty six is gone, Highway thirty is gone. And there's literally no way to get into the valley or for anybody from the valley to get to us, except for air or water. So we got no sewer and water, two hundred and fifty homes uninhabitable. Four hundred people are assembled at Underhill with nothing. That doesn't count the six hundred that are gonna be there that were prepared enough to at least have a go bag with them. So rain slows, sunshine rules the day. And there's an example about what I'm referencing in regards to Highway one oh one. Obviously, this isn't one oh one, but it's a representative example. Even the Tillamook Railroad railway is impassable. Tsunami debris would be significant. And it would extend all the way up and down the coast of Oregon, Washington, and Northern California and come inland to the point of of the high watermark. So you want to avoid that area at all costs. The first responders I have pictured here, obviously not first responders, or are they? They may be the only people who are able to be available to help somebody in need. We don't know who those people are gonna be. Could be you or me, may not be anybody. So think about that in regards to your preparation. So who assumes responsibility for care? That's a really good question, and it's something that I don't think any of us can answer because of the significance of any event. That responsibility certainly lies on yourself and your family. And at some point, there will be help, but till help is arrived, help arrives, you've got to rely on your own resilience and that of your family. What resources are available? Maybe none. Where will people be saved? I can't answer that. I don't know. But again, a question worth thinking about as you consider emergency preparedness. Will people have food and water, only what they've got available, or what the city and surrounding agencies are able to supply to help those that don't have any? How will help arrive? Don't know. It might not be readily available, might be some time. When will services be restored? In a Cascadia event, the expectations are that services as we know it may not be available for years. It's that that much of a concern. But again, I'm not, while I'm focusing on Cascadia, I want you to realize that you need to be prepared for that power outage like two thousand and seven that lasts for ten or twelve days. When will people be evacuated? Don't know. With the limited opportunities for road travel, that may be again, water or air may be the only way in and out. And it may be sometime, as Linda mentioned a moment ago, the resources are gonna be directed to the valley where there are more people. It's just a natural phenomena that most of the most of the available resources are gonna go to where most of the people are. And we're gonna be isolated, really, really isolated. So sheltering can be really difficult, especially when you're just trying to take care of yourself immediately after an event, and none of those services or supplies are available to the public other than those that they brought themselves. So what is mask care? It's a number of things. It's initially the city's responsibility as our local government agency to be responsible for providing assistance to displaced injured families following a disaster. I think that's been made clear both by Linda and her opening statements and also the chief, that the cities, the cities got to take that responsibility. And a mask care also refers to a wide range of support services when citizens or visitors are unable to care for their basic needs. Wide range. Well, what, how do you get to wide range? You get to wide range with planning and effort and money. And money, we know, is in short supply. So we can do the planning part. When I say we, I'm referencing the city in this case. They can do the planning part and they can do the they can do the support piece, except for the financial piece, which is a really slow process. This might be a good time to mention, for those of you that don't know, that the city of Manzanita has been setting aside substantial, fairly substantial amounts of money every year for the past five years. And there's currently fifty thousand dollars in their coffers to supply emergency equipment supplies for the community. Leila has invited me back next month to talk to you specifically about some supplies that might be useful and helpful to the community. So and as Chief Bestwick pointed out, the disaster response begins and ends at the community level. What does that mean? That means that the city takes over the responsibility after an event. And that stays with them, even though they may be coordinating outside resources. But their response is critical and it's local and it's immediate, immediately here in the community. So I'm gonna, I've already used a bunch of acronyms, and I hope if I skipped over the definition of some of those acronyms, I must apologize. But in this case, it was so large of an acronym and so much information, I thought it was best to actually write this down for your edification. So OSPAC, Oregon Seismic Safety Policy Advisory Committee, was formed as an arm of the Oregon Emergency Management in two thousand and eighteen. Actually, it was part of that, I'm sorry. But the particular information that follows here came out of a document that they prepared in two thousand and eighteen specifically for and dealing with Cascadia. This is about a forty five or fifty page document, and it relied upon resources and technical information from experts in seismology as well as mask care experts from the entire region. And I think these bullet points are really critical. There are things that you should really think about in regards to resiliency, preparedness, and response. The Oregon coast faces monumental mask care challenges. That alone is significant and kind of frightening, monumental. Local emergency, local emergency response may be three days. So in talking to Chief the other day, I I asked him about how long it would be before his people could get to the station barring roads that were open and free for passage. And he said, you know, it's, it might be three days before my, any of my people can even show up here at the station. So just to give you an idea of the significance and the what an impact that something like that would have on our community and our first responders. Local response may be limited for up to two weeks. So somebody may show up, but is that gonna be enough to take care of everybody's needs? No, probably not. It's gonna be limited for some time. Outside resources to the coastal region may be three weeks. This is all straight out of that manual that OSPAC developed. Oregon Emergency Management, that's OEM, is not prepared to deal with Cascadia. They freely admit that. And just for what it's worth, I just want to mention that just this last week, the Oregon Emergency Management is preparing to become the Department of Oregon Department of Emergency Management, which means they will be under the direct authority of the governor, and they will answer to the governor. Current Oregon Emergency Management is under direction from the National Guard and the State Police. So that's gonna change and give them more authority to operate independently of other agencies. OEM staffing is inadequate to reduce vulnerability. They just don't have enough people. Stable funding is needed for core resilience efforts. So again, it comes back to the dollar. Increasing community resilience is best, is the best solution to resolve mask care throughout the state. Increasing community resilience. How do we do that? Practice, practice, practice. Take, take the opportunity to be involved in emergency preparedness. Take the opportunity participate in classes and organizational training. State and local communities must rely on non-governmental organizations. There are several in the area that might participate in that. The Emergency Volunteer Corps is one, near and dear to Linda's heart. Non-governmental organizations are expected to play roles in disaster response. This is straight out of, out of OSPAC. They're expected to play roles. And want to be clear, what the chief said earlier is really important. He doesn't want a bunch of volunteers showing up at the fire station to try and assist with their efforts because they need to function as a unit without outside distraction. But there are still roles that non-governmental organizations can play. So SER is the Community Emergency Response Team. MRC is the Medical Reserve Corps. Both of those are arms elements of within EVC and B. Currently, I think you'll all be happy to hear this. Currently, there are fifty five fully trained certs in the city of Manzanita. And currently, there are, this is remarkable to me, Medical Reserve Corps, twenty five people in the city limits of Manzanita who have been or are currently involved with medic, as a medical professional. That means they have a license to practice either as a doctor or a registered nurse or a nurse practitioner. I think that's a remarkable achievement for a community of this size. This could be local life after Cascadia. We could end up with you know, I I think about driving through Portland and Seattle and what a depressing scenario it is to witness all these folks that are camped along the sides of the road. And yet, reality says if we have some type of a major event in our area, we may be well faced with the same type of living situation. So don't discount the opportunity to take a look at their setups when you drive by sometime. Mask care duties and responsibilities. The city does support the following until outside additional resources arrive. And we already know that that may be some time. So the city supports emergency assistance, shelter, hydration, nourishment, medical, the distribution of emergency supplies, and the reunification of family members. And how that happens is up to the city and their emergency operations plan. What is emergency management? It's preparedness, response, recovery, and mitigation, as outlined in the little graph over there on the left. As the chief pointed out earlier, the photo of the Emergency Operations Center is certainly not reminisce or not specific to our community. We wouldn't need nor have the space for anything that's significant, that large. But I I think you get the concept. The concept is a place where people can assemble and make decisions and pass that information out to the community and obtain information from the surrounding communities as well. So the city of Manzanita will follow their new emergency operations plan. That plan was concerted effort on the parts of a couple of city officials, on some city staff, and on my predecessor, Peter Nun, with EVC, to develop a plan for the city. It just was effective on the third of June of this last year, two thousand and twenty. And my understanding is, although he has refused to acknowledge, but my understanding is that Councilor Nudel actually wrote the emergency operation plan, and hats off. It's a sixty nine page document that is full of really comprehensive and most helpful information when it comes to getting a community together and being able to prepare for those that are affected. The emergency hub, M hub, when fully developed and activated, will, and this is in the emergency operation plan, it will serve as a primary resource for all emergency events. It will serve the emergency needs of the city. It will be a focal point of delivery of emergency services, the needs to residents, homeowners, and visitors. And I think it's important to point out that we're visitors there. There has been some concern amongst some of the citizenry. I've heard it before expressed that, well, why do we have to take care of them? Well, it's not only moral and ethical, it's also a requirement. It's a government requirement that anybody that's here falls under the care, concern, and consideration from the local government. So that M hub, Manzanita Emergency Hub, is gonna act as an EOC. It will provide administrative services for our immediate area and also taking in information from other other EOCs. It will provide logistics, figuring out how things are gonna function and where they're gonna go and how they get there. It'll be a planning arm. Planning for these events is critical and during and after an event even more so. It'll be a communication hub, an opportunity again to share with outside EOCs, as well as take information in and disseminate it amongst the community. They'll also be providing capabilities assessment, i.e. determine how best to move forward after an event. Manzanita hub will be limited to government personnel and volunteers as activated via ICS. The mayor already alluded to the fact, he sure as heck didn't want to be there for three days in a row. I get that. But there may be some folks who have skill sets that would be helpful and valuable. Skill sets that would be helpful and valuable. To the command or excuse me, to the, uh, to the hub and to the leaders in the EOC. That can help spell some folks who are worn out. So for support, the EVC and B, that is the Emergency Volunteer Corps of the Halum Bay, for those of you that may not know. We offer support through partnering as an advisory to the city. Preparing the community through education and information sharing. We also perform detailed studies. And share that information with the local governments. We provide proof of concept and recommendations. And I will be, again, I think Leila has, uh. Offered me to come back next month and talk about. Some recommendations for some emergency supplies and equipment. For the local community here from Manzanita. We're also reviewing, reviewing needs as a team. An example of that was the Emergency Operation Plan. Working an active, uh. In an active role with, with the city, with the community. We're also a conduit for Oregon Emergency Management and Dogami. Dogami is the Department of Geology and Mineral Industries. They are an arm of emergency management and they deal with specifically. Uh, seismology and the results of impending disasters. They're a terrific organization, but. It's really difficult for anyone in a, in city government to keep track of all this stuff. That's a role that we play. I've facilitated. A couple of documents to, uh, our new city manager, to Leila Amon. And, uh. She's been happily re- she's happily received them and I imagine eventually she'll. Hook up with all these various, uh, resources that are out there to the benefit of the community. But for right now. Um, anything I see that I think might be helpful, beneficial to her and the city. I'm offering that. So a recent study from Dogami, and by the way, this is on the EVC and B website. Um, if you go to EVC and B dot org. There's, uh, a link to the study and it was the effects of a nine-point-two Cascadia event. Um, there's mapping that. Gives everyone an opportunity to figure out how long it's going to take them to get from point A to point B, i.e. a place of refuge. So I was really thrilled to get this because these numbers are. They're very impactful, but they have. They've, they've reduced in volume, the numbers of injuries and deaths. From a study they did a couple of years ago. So I want to be clear, I'm not, uh, I'm not advocating that this is the right numbers. But these people are well versed in what they do, and I think that it's a reasonable assumption on their part. Based on studies. A hundred and one injuries from Manzanita, forty deaths. Expected number of displaced people, this is just the Manzanita, four hundred and eighty-one permanent displacements. Resulting from a nine-point-two Cascadia event. Four thousand one hundred and nine temporary. And you say, well, how can that be? There's only six hundred people that live here full-time. What they did is when they did this study, they took into account. High season and low season, i.e. summer and winter, and. They took the median of both of those. So basically these are. Spring, fall numbers and the likely number of. Temporarily displaced people. Now, some of those people were probably living in. Tents and manuf- or excuse me, tents and RVs down at the state park. So real first responders on the left and folks that can. Assist initially before the first responders are able to get there. With first aid and perhaps some triage. So how does the, how do the non-governmental organizations get ac- activated? If you think of that earlier Cascadia scenario. The local governments and first responders are overwhelmed. The chief already alluded to him needing boots on the ground the first day and there they are and. The certs would fulfill some of those roles. City and county could activate EVC and B for support. EVC and B provides train, volunteers, certs and MRC. And the crisis effect is lessened with additional help. So moving on to the proof of concept. The process that we've gone through, uh, as an organization is to identify a need. And I'm going to use the example of sheltering. Sheltering is a definite need, right? But what type of sheltering? So. We've, uh, taken the time to research different opportunities for soft-sided shelters. But they have to be functional, durable. They have to have a long useful life. They must be easily deployable. And what are the storage requirements? How much room are we going to have to take up to store this stuff? How much does it cost finally? And then back to drill, 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 practice, practice, practice. So this is a recent purchase by the Emergency Volunteer Corps. And we are drilling with that now. This is a canvas wall tent that will accommodate easily, uh, eighteen people to sleep. And it's waterproof. It's got an internal frame. It's simple to put up. And we've been exercising that over the last, uh. Two months and we hope to be doing some more drills with that. And eventually, according to the Director of Public Works, his plan is that. The city of Manzanita may purchase this from us to have available as a shelter. I'm going to leave you with this. With a quick story. This is from the earthquake in New Zealand in two thousand sixteen. Uh, Kaikura is, uh, an east coast town on the South Island. It's located. About a hundred and five miles north of Christ Church. Has an estimated permanent population of twenty-four hundred. So four times the size of Manzanita. The infrastructure was heavily damaged in this two thousand sixteen earthquake. And the bay and surrounding region were uplifted by as much as seven feet. And by the way, Dogami tells us that. Our beach out here, our coast is likely to drop by as much as three or four meters. Um, that doesn't mean the ocean. That means the beach. That means surrounding land near the, near the ocean. So aftershocks continued to rattle New Zealand for weeks and up to a hundred, a hundred thousand. One hundred thousand landslides, hampered rescue efforts following the seven-point-eight magnitude earthquake. According to New Zealand's official source of geological hazard information. There were somewhere between eight thousand and a hundred thousand landslides following the quake. With many roads closed indefinitely. The town of Kaikura was completely cut off from the rest of the country by landslides. Prompting a mass evacuation that began the day following the quake. According to AP, New Zealand sent military helicopters. And two Navy ships to rescue a thousand tourists and hundreds of residents who were stranded in the town. Some two hundred tourists were rescued within two days, but it took nearly a week to remove the remaining residents of the town. The earthquake only killed two people and triggered a small tsunami. So. I think the last comment here on this is that. Kaikura was essentially isolated. But according to the air commander, Darren Webb. There's a real imperative to support the town because it can't support itself. Now, I want you to just think for a minute. About the different scenario from what I posed earlier with Cascadia and what happened in New Zealand. What happened in New Zealand was a very local event. The way that their size. Their faults run. They tend to produce less damage regionally and it's more local. So just a completely different scenario. While we're likely to suffer immense loss and particularly property. Theirs was more local and not, not as involved. So with that, I thank you and. I'll take it back to you, Linda.
All right. Thank you, Lee. That was a, a very comprehensive presentation about what mask care is all about. Does the council have any questions for Lee?
I have a question. I didn't, it's not really for Lee. Unfortunately, it's, uh, probably more for the chief. I know he's left, but I think you guys can probably help me out. So obviously we don't need an EOC the size of the. The one in Glendale, Arizona, but I'm curious if the. Uh, EOC such that it is that's at the firehouse, is that closer to the model of what? You think we need?
Yeah, it, it is. It's, it's a room that would be about the size, well, it's a, it's a. It's essentially a training room with radios along one side of the wall. Uh, and collapsible tables, so the tables could come up easily. To provide a sitting space for people working on the E, uh, in communication. And then there's a, essentially a conference table and that's, that's all there is in the EOC. Uh, so it's, it's really the equipment that you need, the backup power that you need, and then just a space to meet that is secure.
And, um. I'm sh- I'm assuming that EV, uh, EVC has been. Having presentations like this or at least conversations like this with the other, uh, local jurisdictions. I'm just curious about, um. The level of, uh, coordination, um, and ultimately shared, uh, um. Shared expenses, uh, among jurisdictions. If, if that's. Granted, Manzanita, both because of its size and its location, logically will ultimately, uh. Be helping more than just the citizens of Manzanita, but there are opportunities, I would think i- i- in advance to be. Pairing, uh, for, uh, the sharing of costs. Um, and I'm just wondering how, how far have you gone in terms of. Talking with the other cities, um, and, and the county for the unincorporated, uh, areas of this region.
Well, I, I didn't plan that question. I'm really glad you asked that question, Gary. So we have, there is a group of, uh, uh, agency heads, mayors. The school district, wastewater, port of Nahalem, they get together about once a quarter. And what we do once a quarter is go over how we are advancing in terms of, of, um. Our preparedness, how we can work together, uh, what the mutual aid agreements say. So we're, we're in. We're at least four times a year and sometimes more than that, we get together to talk about how we, how we will be working together. Added to that in the, in August, um, Todd Simmons, who's the general manager for, uh, PUD. Is going to come and, uh, give a class in response. It's essentially the ICS classes that talks a lot about the instant command system. And then we're going to have a drill after that. And I think those are the kinds of things that are beginning to surface. Discussions about how we work together, what of our, what are our resources? What, what is Manzanita's desire to share? I mean, because it will ultimately be Manzanita's choice. About how, how integrated we are regionally and how much we, um. How much we share our resources. I know that's a discussion the council has not yet had. Uh, and I'm hoping that as we move forward and when it's appropriate, it will be a discussion that we have because I know there's some fairly strong feelings on council. On kind of both sides of the issue. So Manzanita will be a player. Uh, the forum group is really working hard in the, in the Nahalem Bay region. And as part of the forum group, we have Commissioner Mary Faith Bell who joins us. And, uh, is, uh, is part of those discussions as well. So I, we're. We're, we're working together. We're making progress, but we've got a long way to go before we get to a point where we feel. That we've, we've got a handle on, on how we'll respond. Um, but I, but we are making progress and that's a really good question. That's really important.
Lee, can I, oh, just for, sure. I'm sorry, Jerry, but I was just going to add to that, you know, planning. Emergency planning is planning for the worst and hope for the best, right? One, one of the difficulties that I think we will experience is the geography of our location is not our friend. And the reality is that it would be pretty easy even for a moderate quake. To take out any opportunity to. Travel between us and even the Halum or even Wheeler. So when we talk about cooperation and sharing of resources, a lot of that I think will be dictated. Based upon the type of event and the severity of the event. But the planning for the worst would be you plan for not being able to get there or to do that. Um, and so all those have to go into the equation. It sounds great on paper and we can just drive over to Nahalem and help them. But the reality is that may not, in fact, likely will not be the case in a significant seismic event. And the other thing I was going to add. For a visual standpoint in an EOC, in a small jurisdiction like Manzanita. The best ones I've ever seen have been a room where you walk into the room and you don't even know it's an EOC. Because all of the radios and the desk and the hardware and everything is really hidden in the walls. And the reality is when it's activated as an EOC, then after lots of practice. Uh, everybody's able to go in and basically accommodate that room and, and make it into an EOC. So. It is truly multipurpose and in the original plan for the city hall, we had designed the police training room. To be the EOC, but you know, ninety-nine point nine percent of the time when you walked into that room. It would look like a police training room, but upon activation of an EOC, suddenly you would see. Walls that open, you would see, you know, desks that are created, you would see radios in the wall. I mean, just a lot of different things that would happen. And I guess the other thing I would just add from my experience anyway is we're not talking about a lot of money here. It being the term EOC sounds like it's going to cost, you know, a hundred thousand dollars. The reality is. I don't know what the number would be, but I'd be surprised if it's north of twenty thousand bucks. Because you're just talking about some radios and some, you know, rarely relatively low cost items and Linda can probably talk better about that.
I, I did a quick estimate with, with, uh, Chief Veswick and we came up to a number closer to ten thousand dollars.
Ten thousand dollars, yeah.
In a room that was, that, that, you know, had resources, uh. Like a TV and screen. So what you needed would be the additional radios. Uh, so it, it really isn't, it won't be that. It wouldn't be that costly to add in.
Well, Jerry, back to your question about, you know, does Manzanita. Share responsibility with the other local communities, the villages. I can, I can say that Wheeler. Is really, um, devoting a lot of energy and dollars to emergency preparedness. And there, there, there are a number of folks who are active with EVC who live in the area. And they recognize the vulnerability of A, the hillside, B, an earthquake that they're going to be isolated as well. And they've identified some water sources, uh, a number of resources that. Would be available to them, uh, to. Ease the burden and that's what we're talking about here. We're not going to solve everybody's problems. But to ease the burden on those that are affected. And they've done a great job. The Halum, on the other hand, is a little behind. Uh, however, Linda and I are both excited. They have a new city manager. Who is very much engaged in emergency preparedness and. My hope is that we can, uh, we can help them along. So.
So I just have one other thought. It's not really a question. I'm just, uh. Struck by how, um, this conversation about, uh. An EOC and the new city hall project have been, um. Intertwined and to some extent it's been complicated. Um. It, it sounds to me like, um. You're saying we need an EOC. We would need an EOC if we were not building a city hall, right? I mean, if we didn't have a city hall project, uh, underway.
Right.
And we, and our city hall project is not going to, you know, we're not going to have an operational building up and running. Uh, for a couple of years. So between now and then, I presume we have a need for, uh. EOC. So I, I guess I'm just curious if, if there's a way to sort of, uh. De-link the conversation. Granted, the ultimate permanent EOC logically would be at a new city hall. Granted, the ultimate permanent EOC logically would be at a new city hall, but it just seems to me that, that some of the conversation we were having with the community has, has been complicated, because these two things are mushed together, but they're actually independent needs. They ultimately will come together physically, but I, like, you know, the, the Cascadia event could happen tomorrow, we don't have a new city hall tomorrow, so.
Jerry, that's exactly, that is a great, that's a great comments, not question, I think you're right on. And, and we have done some work around that, but not a great deal. And I think that may be something council may want to talk about in terms of, with Eric and with Dan, to see maybe how we could do that in a way that would be a stopgap between now and, and the city hall. I, that's a really, really good comment.
Lynda, that was one of your first bullet points that you sent out to the council earlier this week about can an EOC be adapted from current space with a little pre-planning?
Right.
And I think that, that would be a great conversation for you folks to have.
Well, we essentially had no choice, and, and not to be a broken record, but the first time we have an exercise or a drill, you'll discover that, right?
Well, we do have a space that we call the Manzanita Operations Center, but it's completely inadequate, and that's the old lunchroom in the back of the old fire station, right, Lynda?
So, no, so what, what we have set up as kind of a temporary, not well, not well, either located or, or not the right kind of equipment, is a water treatment plant. The water treatment plant is essentially Manzanita's operations center, were we to have something tomorrow. But it isn't adequately, it, it's not adequately prepared. It, it would allow us to have a central space, but very little else. And based on Jerry's comment, and I'll, I'll talk to Leila and Mike, but maybe it would be a good, I think it's a good idea to come back with a plan to make it a more robust temporary emergency operations center, if that makes sense to the council.
Well, you know, if, if you're only talking about $10,000 or $20,000, and Jerry is right, it's going to be two years before we're probably moved into a new building. Why don't we spend that money now and get a more robust operations center going, in case we need one? Because what we have now is totally inadequate.
Well, in that case, if that, if that is, if that's supported by the full city council, I'd like to request some, some of Steve's time and Dan Whitehead and, and Eric to get together to join a team to figure out what we need and to talk to Leila about coming up with a budget.
So I guess what we're talking, what I'm talking about, and I hope I'm not opening Pandora's box here, but is, is uncoupling the new administration city hall project from the, the need for emergency operations center. I mean, we don't have to have them tied together.
That's right, that's right.
From that, from the standpoint I'm talking about, well, we can have that discussion going forward.
I tell you what, next, the next workshop, Lee's coming back with some options on mask care. Let me have some time with Leila and maybe with Steve and staff and figure out what, what we, what, what, what we might talk about and what the cost and budget might be, and then see if the council is, is ready to take that step.
Okay.
Thank, thank you, Jerry. So any, is, are there any comments from the community?
I do not see any hands raised, Lynda.
Okay, well, I want to thank you, Lee, very much for the time you took in, in the presentation and for your extensive discussion of what, about what mask care is, that really prepares us to talk next workshop on, on what supplies and what might be needed to start the, the preparation for mask care. And many thanks to Jerry for his question. And the next workshop will come back with, hopefully with a proposal about an interim EOC adapted from the, from what we currently have. So with that, that's the end of the emergency preparedness. Oh, Steve, did you want to say something?
Well, I just wanted to make a quick, I noticed that Anna made a comment about social, she called it social disruption events. And you may want to talk about this, but if I can just make a quick comment, and that is, this is a perfect example of all hazards, emergency operations plan in response. Because although we think about the earthquakes in the buyer district and how they would be intimately involved in the, in the development of an incident command system, in the case of a social disruption event, as she talks about, the police department become the incident commander in that case.
Exactly, exactly.
And so every event has a different characteristics. The reality is on the social, again, the social disruptive events, I've never heard that term, but that's a good one. We have that in our plan, actually, as far as who's responsible for that. And, you know, the, the event doesn't change the EOC. The EOC would operate exactly the same, except that the system in many respects would be providing support primarily to the police department. But the police department, at least initially, would be the incident commander in this case. So it's a really good, and the, you know, utility department could be the incident commander in a certain types of incidents. So it's a good example of how, you know, the system is very flexible and it's incident dependent in terms of how you approach it. So, but there is civil disruption discussed in our emergency operations plan, not to the degree that, you know, it's probably going to be an event in Manzanita, but it's, you know, we have the opportunity to at least address it, so. I just wanted to answer her question.
Oh, that's, that was a great question, and that was a terrific response. Thank you, Steve.
So.
I think we're done.
Okay, I just wanted, before we adjourn and take a break for dinner before it costs me, I just want to review some of the other general items real quick, see if anybody has any better questions about what we're going to try to accomplish with the city agenda tonight. First of all, I, you know, each year, we always have the police chief give us a summary on what happened over the Fourth of July weekend. And when I was working with Leila putting together the agenda, I totally forgot that, and she hadn't been here, it didn't remind me. But I'm, I am going to, Eric will be at the meeting tonight, and I'm going to ask him to give us a rundown of what happened over the weekend before we get started on our, our items on the agenda. And I understand Leila actually rode with him on the Fourth of July. So I want to hear what both of them have to say. So it's not listed on the agenda, but I'm going to call on them first to give us a summary and answer anybody's questions about the weekend. We're also going to do a short public hearing on the new liquor license for one of our newer merchants, the offshore grill. It shouldn't be too controversial. And then you probably noticed on there, Lynda, let me ask you about the discussion on the EOC, what we're going to do tonight. I assume you're going to give us a summary about what we discussed today and what we're going to try to do next month?
Yes, I, yes, it will take about 15 minutes, maybe. Chris will just do a quick overview of the EOC, and Lee will cut his presentation down to about 10 minutes, and then I'll do a quick overview about next time. So it won't be, it will not be any longer than 20 minutes and hopefully shorter.
Okay. And then you also saw on there, we've got on there rescinding our state of emergency and listing our COVID restrictions. I think as everybody knows, the state of Oregon lifted theirs at the end of June, and Tillman County followed suit, so it's probably only logical that we. Does anybody have any questions about any other things on the agenda tonight? Or if not, we'll see.
I don't have any questions, but I, and I, Dan will not be surprised. I do, I will have some comments, not comments, I'll have some questions regarding the contractual change from the engineering firm that we're using on the Dorcas. And I think I've tried very hard to make sure Dan's got all the questions ahead of time here. But that's one issue that I think I'll, what I would like to spend a few minutes talking about.
I anticipate, well, there's, there's a lot of history with the engineering firm the city's worked with for years, going back to the days when Larson was actually, their offices were above the offshore grill and that building at one time, right in Manzanita? And, but yeah, I think we'll, we'll, we'll have some time allocated, make sure everybody's comfortable with what's going on there. I have a few questions myself, so.
And I, Mayor, I also noticed that, and Lynda, you want to talk about this, but Lynda Kestner is asking about whether the EOP is available on the city website. And I will just, the, the issue with an EOP in any jurisdiction is there is sensitive information contained within it, and including contact information, even to the point of where there may be information regarding combinations to locks and access. So it's traditionally not something that you would publish for public dissemination. But Lynda and I have in the past talked about taking an EOP into a less formal format and just providing basic information about how the emergency operation plan works. Is that fair?
Yeah, actually, what we did is we took the sensitive information and put that in the regional operations plan. And so the local Manzanitas does not have that sensitive operation, sensitive information, and it was so that we could provide it to the public. So I believe it's on the website, but let me check.
Seen it there, but yeah.
Okay, I'll, I'll follow through and check, and then we can hopefully talk about that tonight, too.
Anybody else got anything, or we'll adjourn for dinner and be back at 7:00?
And just one quick thing, Mayor, if I may, Lynda, can you make sure to get Chief Bezos' presentation in the presentation that Lee just gave us, so that we can get that posted to the website and on the record?
Lee, you heard that, right?
N4.
Oh, he's got the lingo down.
Affirmative. Actually, Leila, I sent that earlier today to Nina. So she, she has, she has.
Anybody have anything else before we adjourn? Okay, we're going to adjourn at 4:33, and we'll see you tonight at 7:00.
Thank you, thank you, Lee.
You bet. Thanks, everyone.